All right. Well, hi, welcome everybody to the Planning Commission on October 24th. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. You have a motion to approve?
I shall move to approve the agenda.
All right.
I'll second.
Moved by Neil, seconded by Steve. Any discussion? Pretty straightforward. Okay, all in favor of the agenda as stated?
Aye.
All right, next up is approval of the minutes from October 10th. I'll take a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Moved by Megan, seconded by Stephen. And any discussion?
I have one page at the very top of page two. It reads Neil Curtis mentioned indications for the district if the zoning is changed. And I recognize that I was not particularly articulate on that topic when I spoke to it, and I apologize to the commission for that. I think what it should say however is Neil Curtis indicates -- Neil Curtis questions the implications for the whole district if the zoning is changed. Questions, implications for the whole district. I think that was my intent.
So questions and implications for the whole district to replace the word indications?
Yes. Thank you.
Makes sense. All right, anything else? Mine, super knickpicky, but on page three, the second motion that's listed, the word "second" by Stephen Sullen needs a D. Aside from that, that was it. Good notes. Any other discussion on the minutes? All right, seeing none. All in favor of minutes as stated with those corrections? Aye.
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 Okay, Stephen will abstain.
I was listening for that. You're paying attention. I like it.
You could still vote. Didn't we decide that you could still vote?
That's true. We did do that. Yeah. But, good call.
I think if you don't have to, it's okay.
Right, right. Okay, any disclosures this evening relating to any potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none. Open to the public. And, all right, I think we're good. So moving on to the capital improvement plan topics.
You have Peter here.
We do.
I wasn't sure he would be here, but he's here. And, did you have anything you wanted to load on?
No, I'm just here to listen.
Okay.
Who distributed the draft.
Yeah, and I'm realizing now that the packets have been prepared, and I emailed the documents that Peter supplied, and I didn't forward them to the computer, so I can do that right now so that they'll be projectable.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Are they -- he's right here in the packet. Is that -- or were they updated since?
Well, there was an example from last year.
Yeah.
And other material, but then when I emailed you the notification that the packets were ready, I had attached the documents that Peter had supplied. So those will be projected.
Okay.
Okay.
That's that, sorry.
I don't think I did either.
I thought the attachments were in the packets.
Right, yeah.
So it's that assumption that did the same thing. Peter, how's the process going so far?
Just starting. So I think last year the commission expressed the interest in getting the plan earlier rather than once it's gone through the process of ready for adoption, so I think that was a good suggestion, so I think why it's on the agenda tonight.
Great, yeah. Where is that? Out of curiosity, Peter, the Select Board the other night, I think I mentioned that concept of possibly having a sidewalk fund of some sort relating to the -- what to do in those cases. And I was just curious. I saw a couple of eyebrows raised, and I took my takeaway from that was that it seemed like that was a feasible concept. But when it's come up here, I legitimately just wasn't sure the mechanics of that and if that is a reasonable type of path to take.
I think certainly funds can be put aside for numerous projects. They are as part of the normal budgeting process. I think what was discussed, as I recall, was looking at if someone was getting a permit for a project, that's there would be funds put aside in a general infrastructure fund rather than specific to the project that was being considered.
Right, if they were to end up being granted a waiver because it doesn't make sense at that time, but we wouldn't want to make it so that it's just always waived as a matter of practice.
Right. It's probably a discussion of the town attorney, but it certainly makes sense to put funds aside for future projects. I understand the reasons for looking at it from that perspective.
Okay.
I'd say it's worth considering, yeah.
Great, yeah, that's -- I mostly just wanted to make sure it wasn't some big can of worms to look at it that way. So that's, okay, good.
So, in the email was, and some of this was redundant, but the stuff that you got for this meeting included a series of slides that Peter has prepared and has delivered to the Select Board that basically make the points that were also made in his memo about capital budgeting. And this is the presentation that Peter normally gives, so I don't want to steal his thunder because he's normally the one that gives it, but I wanted you to have the context for it. At one point in time, we thought that the Planning Commission might have the draft, CIP, this document that is worn for hearing. And that's what the law says, that the Planning Commission has an opportunity to review and provide comments on. And this is something that the Planning Commission has started to do for the last, I'd say, five or so years, although by statute, it's something that commissions have the authority to do longer than that. But basically, the CIP is a planning document, but it's not the type of document that you're accustomed to working with, which is setting goals, objectives, and policies and recommended actions, but instead, it's a financial planning document that is used to help the Select Board figure out where its investments will be in the coming years. It has a six-year time horizon, and the year one, which would be the upcoming year, the information in that document is used to inform the budget that the Select Board is going to be developing and presenting to the voters. There's a lot of detail that I don't think I want to get into because these are slides. You can read them. They're very, very simple to go through. So I think I may just leave it at that. And unless there are questions, because if there are questions, I'm happy to delve into it, but I was just going to go from setting the stage by saying that the Planning Commission has an opportunity to comment on the capital budgeting program or the CIP, and say that the comprehensive plan that was just adopted has a lot of statements in it that could be the basis for comments or actual items in the capital plan. And in your materials, I included a page, a single page, where I had pulled out the statements in the document where there is language that uses the phrase "capital improvement program" or "capital budget" or something close to that, which are the most, I guess, blatant examples of statements in the comprehensive plan that you might turn to if you're asking yourselves the question, well, how would we use the -- how would or how might we use the comprehensive plan to give guidance to the Select Board? That list on that one page is an example, okay? The thing I want to say is that those examples are really pretty abstract, and there are many, many other examples in the town plan. And actually, Megan, if you want to grab that stack. So I've gone one step further and extracted out other language from the comprehensive plan that you could look to. Again, if you're trying to say, if you're trying to come up with ideas from the comprehensive plan that could influence the shape of the CIP. So, to get away from the abstractions, I'm instead going to just show, this was the document that was in your packets. What I thought would be helpful was, oh, this is the document that was in your packets. This is the material, or some of the material Peter supplied, and actually, yeah, Jean, I do have an extra packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a complete packet.
Excellent.
So this is, this is the working version of the CIP, and as I was saying earlier, it's a six-year document. It has different categories roughly representing different departments within the town. So what the commission could conceivably do is use language like this pulled from the town plan to make comments on the different parts of the CIP. Now, the CIP is in a draft form. It was thought a while ago that this discussion tonight might be the meeting or the discussion where you'd actually make recommendations, but you're going to be talking about this tonight in a preliminary way and again at your next meeting because you don't actually have the draft version, the hearing version. But what I thought would be helpful would, was to, whoops. Basically, take the document that you got in your packet and add some categories, and in the paper version that you have, you see that there's an additional column, and when I get this projected people at home, we'll see that there's an additional column, where I tried to just make this a little bit easier for you by making it clear that some of these could be grouped. So that first item, I just generally described as it has to do with paths in LaPlatte Nature Park. The second one, it has to do with implementing recommendations from the 2006 Village Plan. Stormwater. The next one, capital facilities required for growth. So if you're looking for some kind of lens to look at the capital budgeting program through, these statements are those, are a possible lens. You can see that capital facilities required for growth, capital facilities supported by studies, sidewalks and crosswalks, streets and roads. They cover a pretty wide range if you're just looking at those things that had a specific reference to the CIP. But when you go beyond that and you look at things, and this is, this is a subjective exercise that I undertook. Two people doing it would do it slightly differently. But I looked at the complete set of goals, recommended actions, objectives, and pulled out those where there was something about it that had to do with the capital investment, something that would make the list, so to speak. As you can see from the slides that Peter had shared, items in the capital program are normally physical. It isn't usually just a study. So I have not included in this extracted list things that would, maybe with some exceptions, and we'll get into those, but I focused on things that would result in a hard asset. So in this first one, I've highlighted these phrases, implemented by a long-term coordinated set of decisions, town investments in the village area. So the comprehensive plan's got, okay, it's got something about making capital investments in the village area. And these are not, I should make it clear, I had the whole list of statements. I put little X's and I sorted on them, so they're not in this order in the plan, obviously. So these were pulled out and then brought together. So then elsewhere in the plan, there's this one that has number two, continue to make improvements to the pedestrian circulation system in the village center, blah, blah, blah. So I'm just saying, that's in this category of pedestrian circulation in the village area. So if you can bear with me, and you can just accept my sort of summary phrases, they start to show up. Certain themes start to show up more regularly. Capital investments in the village, pedestrian circulation in the village, improvements in the village that promote gathering in the pedestrian environment, improvements on Upper Falls Road, Upper Falls Road again, the transit, or bus stops, street trees, improvements in the village area, village gateways, wayfinding, bicycle and pedestrian bridges that would cross the LaPlatte River and help provide connections to Webster Road and Irish Hill. So again, bike ped or a bike ped connection. One of them I included where appropriate, provide wildlife amphibian tunnels and contiguity for -- that would be a capital investment. That could be an item to go on the CIP. There are few that have to do with stormwater, quite a few that have to do with stormwater. This next one, improvements in the village area, Route 7's design in the village, stormwater, municipal sewer lines, parks and rec facilities, that comes up a few different times, paths and trails, access to Lake Champlain, sidewalks, and crosswalks and paths. Those come up on multiple occasions. Traffic calming, resurfacing and rebuilding roads that aren't safe or performing well. Something that comes up at least a couple of times, wayfinding. One of those deviations from it's got to be, it's got to result in a hard asset was a statement having to do with a parking fund, and I threw that one in there because I just wanted to mention that the, last year I think was the first year, that the Select Board included a line having to do with the open space fund, and this may be kind of a related idea that, you know, as a reminder that when we budget every year, there are going to be expenses or investments in things like a fund. So I just threw that one in there because the open space fund is now in there. Easements along the rail corridor, that's in there. Weatherization, and I am getting to the end here, but there were a few at the end that had to do with energy, which I think very much could be suggested as CIP items. So weatherization of town buildings, upgrading the heating systems in municipal buildings. Then there was one other one having to do, it's like the earlier example, a revolving loan fund for businesses. One more page. Capacity studies, the idea of studies that lead specifically to improvements is kind of the exception to the rule, not just a study, but a study that's going to lead to actually building something, so that, that one I included for you to consider. But you see, again, these things come up, parks and rec, paths and trails, walking facilities, energy facilities in town buildings and things like that. If I'd had my act together a little bit more, I would have grouped them so that you would have seen them and maybe counted them, so you would know how many, but then the way I phrased it, you might have done it differently and you wouldn't necessarily agree with the number. But I think you can each have a sense of, you have a sense of certain areas being mentioned a lot, and then as a group, you can decide whether or not you think that there are so many mentions of that particular topic that it's something that you want to be sure is reflected in the CIP in some way. And that if you come to some kind of sense of what maybe three important themes of the CIP should be, then maybe between now and the next meeting, when the, well, we can look informally, but when you get the final version, we can check that version to see if it has those things in it, and if it doesn't, then the recommendation could be made to make changes that do.
This is helpful.
Yeah? Also noting that there are a couple of things we can get, because our next meeting would be on the 14th.
Correct.
So we, there are a couple of topics in here we could run by the Natural Resources Committee when we meet with them on the 5th. And the, there are some other topics that we can run by the Energy Group on the 6th, I think. Is that next one? Yeah, first Wednesday, yeah.
I just, to help, I hope, something to draw your attention to as it relates to bicycle and pedestrian facilities or sidewalks, just to help you orient in the capital program. So I'm just zeroing in. This is kind of blurry.
It's kind of small. Let me get bigger.
Yeah, I'm going to grow it. So, so it's in the Public Works section of the CIP that you do see some projects already included, that have been included, that relate to bike ped, so either sidewalks or paths or ped bridges. So line 24, this is the project that is getting underway that would establish a bike ped bridge in Shelburne Falls and then put some sidewalk up Falls Road. So that's a project that's already reflected. Another project or investment that's included is what we call Segment III of the Long Meadow Webster Road Project, which is basically the area between Boulder Hill and Long Meadow that has been studied in the past, so that segment has been included in this document. This is, this is a line that has been used to make some investments at the suggestion of the Village Bike, Village Pedestrian Safety Group. There are some other things that are not specifically bike ped. The Bay Road Bridge and the Bay Road Underpass, those are obviously more than bike ped facilities, but I can say that the Bay Road Bridge Project is one that, when that was studied several years ago, you know, a question comes up, well, how, you know, how many things are we going to try to accomplish with this project? And accommodating pedestrians was one of the things that's been built into the design. So although it's a bridge, it is important for bicycle pedestrians' mobility. Bay Road Corridor improvements, that was kind of a generic entry. It covers three Then the last one I'm going to mention is this Southern Gateway. There was a study done a few years ago that looked at a whole range of improvements from, let's say, the Route 7 Marset intersection going south all the way to Ridgefield, but with different phases and segments, the northernmost phase being up in the area between Fiddlehead and Shelburne Vineyard, and then another segment going down to Teddy Bear and the segment, the last segment going as far as Ridgefield. So that's another project that is, is reflected in the document. So it's not like you'd be starting from scratch.
Year one and year two and your six-year plan, and I was wondering, is year one guaranteed? Which is to say, if, is this plan, if we develop the year, has the year one column is developed, is that basically assured to go into the year one budget just because this is kind of part of that budget process?
I'm going to say no, because there are no guarantees in life, but. Peter, maybe you want to elaborate on how that typically works?
Yeah, year one, of course, we've got the category FY 1920. That's the fiscal year we're in right now. So the budget's been approved for that year, and the projects that are listed there are anticipated to take place, subject to grant availability and things like that. The rest of the years are projections, estimates, and not guaranteed at all.
Yeah.
So it's one year of reality, and then the rest of your, the other years are projections.
And maybe another way to illustrate it, or an additional way to illustrate it, is I mentioned the capital, the open space fund, that was added. I'm trying to think, was that in the, it's at the very end?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and that was put in for 50 last year, but it was, it was funded at 35, so.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Was it in this year? Is that 50?
Well.
50 for every.
Yeah.
Second year, 35, right?
That's right. Well, but last year, when it was first, when the idea of adding the, this is a, this is a draft from October, and the version that it's replacing was a version that was adopted roughly last, last November. And that, at that time, it had 50, but when the budget was actually written, it came in at 35. It's 35 now because it's reflecting what was in the budget. But it is ultimately a planning tool. It's a guide. The budget is the budget. This is the CIP.
So what is the source of all these line items? Is this just a sort of a living document that's just amended every year and kind of stuff's pushed around? Is that?
Primarily, yes.
Okay, I mean, that's a fine answer.
Our first, our first stop is to talk to the department heads and see what they need in their areas. And that's the first version that we've come across, which is basically this one, largely reflects that, but then obviously it's beyond that in terms of what does the bike ped committee think, what does the planning commission think? So we want to make sure, and as Dean said, I think it's particularly important to see some of the projects that the town plan identifies in the capital plan. That's the way you get to actually build them. Plan for it, put it in a capital improvement plan, and then actually fund it. So it's kind of that progression of linkages.
Super. Thank you.
When we're looking at this, and first thank you for all of this, this is really helpful. When we're coming up with ideas of things that maybe could go in, should we be thinking of what we'll be leaving? Because this is, I assume, a finite amount of money, so anything we add in is taking away from something else, or is that, are we at a brainstorming stage where that's not something we should be concerned about at this point?
Probably I would say the, ultimately, the Select Board will have the final say in what's in and what's out. And I'm not sure, I guess I would err on the side of including things at this point that you think are important and not, not worry about, well, it's going to have to replace something else. So we're just interested at this point in your ideas. Obviously, we're going to have more projects that can reasonably fund it in a year. We do assume grants for a lot of these projects, that if there's a grant available, then it will happen. But, yeah, I would say whatever, I think the planning commission, with the excellent work you did on the town plan, would be looking for projects that actually make those, those plans happen. That's what I would try to focus on, I think, at this point. What are your biggest priorities to get done, you know? Highest priority would be in the early years. Lower priority would be in the later years.
Okay, thank you.
I would just jump in to add that it's important to remember that these are the total cost, and like Peter said, there's this indication of it assumes that it would be 80% grant funded. Well, it's not put in at 80, it's not put in at just our, our local share, the 20%, it's the full amount. So in a sense, it's overstating the cost. It's, it's something that if you look at the total, you track it over time, you have some sense of what the town's capacity is, but this document in and of itself isn't cost constrained. I mean, there's, there's no, there's no, as far as I know, statutory requirement that says, before you can put it in here, you've got to make sure that you've got some kind of realistic expectation of the funding. I mean, some of these things are pretty pie in the sky. So given that, then I think that means that there, in my experience is, it means that there is some flexibility. It can be bigger, but it just means that the more things that are competing for funds in a given year, the more likely it is that there's going to be something that gets pushed back.
Sure. So at what point do we look at specific numbers and, and have comments on those? Because we're looking at the open space fund, which it used to be, at one time, it was $75,000. And then times were tough, and that got cut back through, you know, like all the years, and then it was threatened to be, you know, like taken out entirely. So if the recommendation was to go for $50,000, $50,000 last year, and only $35,000 was appropriated for it, if we start at $35,000, that sounds like a recipe for, like, going down to nothing. It's, it's already small at $35,000, but is this the, the time where we talk about specific numbers, or?
You will ultimately have a chance to, if you, if you were to look at the draft or the, the hearing version, or just even this one, and if you were as a group to say, you know, we really think that there's overinvestment in one area or underinvestment in the other, I mean, you can choose a line. You can, you can make a comment about it.
you can choose a line, you can, you can make a comment about a specific line. The thing to remember, though, is what Peter said, and that is, the, the first column is the year we're in now, it, it's kind of water over the, over the dam, the fact that, yes, the hope had been $50,000 for this year, but in the end, to make the budget work, the actual budget, it had to be 35. Now, if, if, instead of showing 50 for the coming year, it was another 35, then I think you'd be, you'd be saying, well, wait a second, the plan was 50, why are you doing 35?
Okay, so we should be really looking at the second column?
I didn't, I didn't get that.
Okay.
So, the first column is done, that's, that was last year's.
That's the current year we're in right now, and that's the budget that was approved, so that's what we're operating in. What is the year, one?
Our fiscal year is July 1th to June 30th.
Right. Actually, look at year two, maybe $65,000, to land it at 50.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Or, or even just put in a line that, from the, because we're not defining the budget, we're providing input to it, so we could make it in our statement, say, the Planning Commission believes that that number should be, yeah, like, that, that's what we're advocating for.
So, what is our deliverable? Is it just a bunch of comments and cells, or is it a memo, or what does that look like?
Sounds like it's making sure what's in the CIP matches up with the comprehensive plan.
Yes, the thing I would say is that, I think, I think that this is part of an evolution, and I think the degree to which the plan will influence the CIP is going to increase over time. I mean, there, there's this brand-new comprehensive plan, it's gonna be the plan, you know, for the next eight years, or roughly, and I think it's great that Peter, as the Finance Director, is tuned into it, and is, is trying to bring it into the, the CIP process. And I think that as years go by, the amount of impact that the plan has is gonna get bigger and bigger. And as you, as a group, as a commission, you know, just refine your strategy, you'll have more impact. But ultimately, the commission, by statute, has the opportunity to review and comment on it. There's not, you don't have a specific mandate, you're not writing it, but you could certainly make suggestions for rewriting some part of it. In, in the past years, the communication has been in the form of a memo, where it's been general statements, it hasn't been really that extensive, or it hasn't been that specific.
Yeah, it's a huge exercise overall, so-
It does seem a little daunting for one meeting, yes.
But hopefully, you know, with some background, then you can attack it, hopefully, that having the subset of the statements will help you, and I think, you know, each member will bring something different to the task, and look at it, you know, in their own way, but I think that's good, because you'll cover more issues because of your interests.
And I, I don't, not, not a specific question on this necessarily, but I remember going back a couple of years, the, the numbers being estimated for our stormwater liability over time. Like, Shelburne's is not small, like, South Burlington's big, Chittenden County is big, like, the whole, the state has big liabilities coming, is, is that things, and I can wait until we see the, the ultimate draft, but are we seeing those numbers increase over the coming years to reflect those estimates?
I'm just gonna be, these are the stormwater projects in this version of the draft, and it totals, what, 1.8?
1.8, yeah.
Now, the flow restoration plan improvements over 20 years, I remember hearing Chris say something about how there's been some revision downward in this, do you know what that figure is?
I, no, I haven't gone beyond these-
But it's multiple millions.
Right, yes.
But there was this sense that there were, there was a positive aspect of it, but then, you know, a few years could go by, and something else could happen, and that game could be lost, if there's some other regulatory change, let's say.
Right, I think that's something that, from a Planning Commission perspective, especially with the work we've just done on Form-Based Zoning, and we've got a topic tonight, I think, or next time, that I, I want to make sure we're keeping that in mind, because there are real dollars that are associated with this, so more strict regulations could end up helping alleviate some of those amounts down the line.
Yeah, and particularly in places where there's some kind of retrofitting of development that's already occurred, that otherwise, the town will be picking up the tab for. But here, the investments upcoming, Boulder Hill, I think, some of these costs are basically what we would be spending in order to help expand an existing facility, so that it has more capacity. So, Boulder Hill, Shelburne Meadows Business Park, so that's Northside Drive, Farmstead, Deer Run. So, it's, it's basically looking first at existing stormwater facilities in those neighborhoods, and doing something with them.
Yeah, I think this is really good, yeah, thank you for walking through that.
So, are there thoughts or observations about schedule, and?
Yeah, we don't have an exact schedule yet, in terms of, that will be on the agenda for the Select Board to discuss it at their meeting this coming week. Hopefully, we'll set a calendar at that point, in terms of when the public hearing will take place in adopting it, so.
Peter, are there any highlights that you can point out, like, big changes in the number from last year to this year?
Probably, the, the biggest change was including the land acquisition for the combined fire rescue facility. I don't think beyond that, there were too much more changes, I mean, the stormwater is still evolving, as Dean mentioned, the costs there are, seem to change every year, in terms of the projects, and the grant availabilities, another question. Beyond that, I think this first version has pretty much got a continuation of where we sort of stopped last year, I didn't see anything that really kind of jumped out at me as being a large, you know, change from last year, but we're still on the beginning steps of the process, so.
Does the intent to keep the annual budget about the same?
I think the intent is to try to avoid large fluctuations in the tax rate or water sewer rates, so that we don't have projects loaded into one year that would hit all of those. As far as, and then grant funding, obviously, is a critical assumption on a lot of these projects. Yes, it's big dollars, but if we can get, you know, 80% grant funding, then that's a plus, and that may come, somehow be a contingency, oh yeah, we'll consider it, but as long as the grants are available. So, I wouldn't say the cost is necessarily the controlling factor, but it's more to try to avoid large fluctuations in tax and water sewer rates in the plan. At least, that's what I look for, in terms of how it all kind of comes together.
Sure. Is it fair to say, one of the things that some, in some ways provides breathing room is as-
Debt is retired, then there's breathing room, and we're gonna be in a, kind of a high-debt period?
Right.
And so, it's gonna be less breathing room.
How long does the high debt last? I assume that's the library.
The library's a big increase, and that's, we're going into the second year of that, because the bond was basically staged over two years, one started at one year, and then increased the next year. One plus that's gonna be a, a offset to those increases, at least partially, is the debt service on this building, the Town Center, that will be finished in a couple of years, so that frees up, then you'll see your debt payments go down some, and again, as was pointed out, that's an opportunity now to fund something that's not gonna, you know, make the tax rate go up, if you're displacing a project that was our, a cost that was already there. So, we definitely look at that.
The bonds are typically 20 years?
20 years, or, or, yeah.
I'm not sure if that's what you were wondering, is it?
Yeah, that was, that's good to know, that the 20-year point on this building's coming up. But the library is 20 years, too, so, yeah.
Okay.
So, we are seeing some increases for the next couple of years, and then, once this is paid off on this complex here, then, then we have some capacity there to look at projects, and we definitely look at that timing as part of a decision-making process.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, or?
Did have a question, the, the sample memo from 2017, there was a line in it that said, impact fees can only be charged for projects that are included in the, the adopted CIP.
Yes.
And it was just more tying together from last time, given that there was a, an offer to say, hey, happy to contribute an impact fee.
Yep.
Is that mechanically even a possible thing?
It's not mechanically impossible, but the thing I would say about impact fees is that it, it requires going through steps, and so, there's a, there's a big administrative overhead that's associated with, with using impact fees. Now, it is important to recognize that there are impact fees in place for recreation facilities, or certain recreation facilities, it's, on the recreation side, it's being used to-
Pay off some debt for Davis Park?
Playing fields.
Playing fields, right, and-
And bike-ped, bike-ped pedestrians.
And it also can be used for certain facilities that have been, had a certain study done for them. So, that project I mentioned, that would go north from Boulder Hill to Long Meadow, that's Segment Three, that's part of the plan that is eligible for impact fees. So, the way things are right now, we don't have impact fees that could be collected, that would go towards Irish Hill, we could go through a process of updating a study, and it's a little bit tortured, but updating the study, making sure that project is in the CIP, and then we could charge impact fees. And the impact fees, we have to remember, it's not like new growth pays for all of it, it's only gonna pay for a share of it, because the burden, you know, other people who already live in Shelburne are gonna take advantage of those facilities, so, that's, it's just high overhead in order to get to the point where you can charge the fee. And some of the things that are in the CIP right now are in there because they need to be in the CIP to be the part of the basis for the impact fee. If we took them out, then that would be making the impact fee vulnerable. So, to have an impact fee, it must be in the CIP, but just because it's in the CIP, doesn't mean we can charge an impact fee.
One of the things that occurs to me, listening to this conversation, is about how the projects that are in the budget are the, are sourced from planning work, right? So, the, the, the bike-ped path you just mentioned between Boulder Hill and Long Meadow, there's a plan for that, what's happening, what's gonna happen on the South Gateway, there was a plan for that, right? So, it just makes me think about the other tasks, the other projects that are in the comprehensive plan, and should we be highlighting those for plans, you know, for very specific studies?
Yeah.
Such that they can then go into the capital improvement plan sometime down the road, like, how does that?
Yeah, well, from my perspective, and Peter may have a better perspective on things that are outside of my wheelhouse, there is a very defined set of expectations when you are using the major grants for bike and ped facilities. So, the Bike-Ped Committee does work hard to get this, get the funding for the right type of feasibility study that can make us competitive for a grant application. There's not much a point in going after some of these funds unless you have it, we got really lucky once with the sidewalk near the museum, but generally speaking, we need those kinds of studies, and the Paths Committee knows that if they have a big project that they want to do, they will need to do a specific type of feasibility study. Other types, other departments, I'm not sure that they have the same kind of constraints.
So, are those committees coming to the Select Board to, to ask that those studies be, put, the money for those studies be put in?
So, so the Paths Committee-
Are they supposed to be coming to us, so that we can ask for them?
So, historically, the Paths Committee has pushed its own, has worked on its own agenda for these types of things, and so, they haven't come through the Planning Commission in order to pursue the funds for a feasibility study, let's say, but it has been, they've been organized enough so that we include the matching funds in a budget, so that they have, if you think about it, is, let's say, you know, it's two steps, you gotta get a study done that will cost between $40,000 and $50,000, and so, they prioritize an area, I will try to include the match portion in the budget that is included in the Planning Commission's realm, and if they're lucky, they get the grant to do that study, so then, $40,000 later, they have the study, which can then become part of an application to go after half a million dollars to actually build something. And so, then, it, it varies a little bit more, because, you know, we're not gonna be budgeting that large an amount speculatively, but if the Select Board, you know, if documents like the Town Plan say, we need to do a bridge over the La Platte River and go up Irish Hill, that's gonna make us better positioned than some, and we have the feasibility study, and it signals that the Select Board supports doing that project, we have a better chance of getting the grant. I'm just trying to think of other departments that may have kind of regular funding sources, where feasibility studies are a key part of it, because they don't-
Would that be Natural Resources be one, like, to designate some kind of sensitive area that the town could, could acquire?
Well, their, their, their mechanism is the Open Space Fund.
Yeah.
So, what their general strategy is, is to try to have the Open Space Fund at a healthy, high level, so that when the time comes to do a project, the money's there to, to go towards it. They, that's pretty much how they operate, we're not, we're not putting in, very often, money for a purchase just by the town, because normally, we're purchasing along with others, or, you know, we'll work with the Vermont Land Trust, and the Vermont Land Trust will go to the Housing and Conservation Board, and they'll, and Vermont Land Trust will work up a budget, and their budget will, you know, put in Shelburne's share as some percentage of the total. And it's, it's kind of subjective, but they think, you know, we try to make it work, they try to make it work, because some projects, they may have two or three different funding sources, and the town will end up, in a sense, you know, maybe getting, we might put in 20%, we might put in 10%, and get a bigger, much bigger project done.
Peter, do you know offhand what the Open Space Fund balance is?
I'm sure he does. It's around, about $200,000 at the end of last year.
Yeah, the last major project that funds were part of were for the Ewing property, over near Bread and Butter Farms, so, South of Cheese Factory Road, it is on the border with Shelburne and South Burlington, and there's more money in the fund right now, because originally, that was thought that some of the land in this property would go to the Nature Conservancy, and some of it would go through the Vermont Land Trust to a farmer. The Vermont Land Trust part has, has been basically slowed down, so, there is a, there's a fairly substantial investment that the town could make if that project reinvigorates.
Okay, so that one isn't, wasn't a done deal yet?
Right, there's a, there's another part of that project, that assuming the pieces all came together, I'm sure that the Natural Resources Committee would be going to the Select Board and saying, okay, it's time to do this project, and that would draw down the Open Space Fund.
It was also most recently used for the Sterling Construction Project to up Irish Hill.
That's right, the Open Space Fund was used to get a bargain sale for a lot along the La Platte River, that was part of the little subdivision that's just on Irish Hill.
Okay.
Yeah, great discussion, and like, time, we're almost right on schedule.
Okay.
Is that, are we good on, were there any other questions on this topic? All right. Yeah, thank you for that, thanks, Peter.
I think the issue for me is to look for linkages between, for the Planning Commission, look for linkages between the Town Plan and the Capital Plan, the Capital Plan is a numberized plan, that's where the funding takes place, and I think you've done such a great job on the, on the Town Plan, it would be nice to see, all right, what are your priorities, what would you like to see done right away to support that? That's how the projects will happen, so. I did not, no, thank you. But thanks for your, thanks for your time, those were excellent questions, and I appreciate your attention to this, it's really helpful.
Yeah, thanks for your thoroughness on all of this. All right. All right, so.
Jump into the plan maps?
Jump in, yeah.
So the packets included this map, which is a marked up version of the map that you'd seen earlier. Previously, we had been focused on really solving the problem with the map that's in the town plan. The problem being the way that the map shows the area near Vermont Teddy Bear. Which, they're basically three different maps that have some of the same information in them, and I'm just showing you one of them to illustrate it. But this planning areas map, which was, has been in the plan to give this general idea of a core, and then an area outside the core, but it's with served by sewer, that's the mustard color. And then beyond that, it used to just be the white. But in this version of the town plan, there's been this overlaying of the green that came from some other maps. And in, in the process of doing that, that's where we, we saw some issues occur. And so we've been talking at the last meetings about the area down here where these parcels are shown as green, and they're shown as green for, I guess, for the wrong reason. So we've talked about flipping that so that it would no longer be green, and it would be in the yellow or the mustard color. But we've also come to realize that there are some other places where the colors could or should change. And so I labeled the ones that were the most obvious. The terraces, gables, and watchill condos, those are open space areas, parts of condos, but they're not open space in any kind of conventional way. I'm just gonna pull back here. And again, just focus on the ones that are kind of real clear. There's some duplexes we talked about before, there's another duplex on John Street. Harbor Crossing Condos, which is over here, beyond Davis Park, is another example. The utility substation near the Thai Hall is colored green. That doesn't make a lot of sense. There are, the garden side condos really should be flipped. And there are some apartments off of Bay Road that are also. Now, the boxes that I have included but not labeled are the kind of borderline cases. If the commission really wants to spend more time with this issue, then it could look at those. And they include places like up here, there's an open space lot that is part of a subdivision many, many years ago. And it's got recreational facilities on it, tennis courts. Is that, does that exclude it or not? Well, maybe, maybe not. Then the other one is also an open space for condos and also has recreational facilities on it. So it's raising this question of when, when should it be green, basically? And this is a kind of a perennial question for the natural resources committee and people that work with this stuff. There are other examples, but that's the basic idea. They are, they're not, they're not conventionally conservation lands. This box here is the lot that is owned by the school, that at one point our thought was that there would be a school there, it was a big quest.
Uphill from the, the storage units, right?
Yes, yeah, a little bit, although a lot of it's wet, so it's, yeah, it's, some of it's upland. Then there are cases like this area, I mentioned Boulder Hill and the path going between Boulder Hill and Long Meadow. It's a very small parcel that has most, it's mostly stormwater pond. So, hmm, should, should a stormwater pond be green? The question, I think, could be answered that, for the purposes of this quick and dirty updating of the comprehensive plan, you could leave it to these major clear cut cases and you don't turn off the other ones. Or if the commission feels like it deserves more discussion, then you could start looking at those other things.
Some of those, is that what we kind of were referring to as association lands?
Yes, yeah, that phrase, association lands has been, has been used for, for a lot of these.
So that's sort of like a yard, like anybody's backyard.
Yeah, it's like common area that's not gonna be-
Yeah, I tend to look at those things as somebody's, like, a developed property, not conservation land.
Yeah, I'm trying to think with our current open space definition, we had, and with all the ooh-ha that happened around the rural zoning changes that we made. There is, it does say athletic fields, and it makes reference to recreation.
Recreation is, that's right.
But when you mentioned tennis courts, to me, there's a difference between having a soccer field and people standing on sidelines and no real infrastructure, and tennis courts, which are technically impervious surfaces. That, that would be a line for me anyway, yeah.
Well, I would, I know I wasn't part of those earlier discussions, but to me, a soccer field is not conserved land either.
And I get that, that's great as well, yeah.
Doesn't have ecosystem services.
Right.
I need to go back in further, so what exactly is the green, what do we want it to represent? What is, what have we said it's supposed to represent?
Conservation lands.
Conservation lands.
I was gonna ask for a summary of what the implications of the change are, which is to say it's sort of easy for me to, conceptually, to think of, well, okay, this is not a conservation land, so let's change it. But what does that actually mean for that property owner? I mean, did they, did they lose something, did they gain something, what, what happens?
Well, I think that in the case of a property like Vermont Teddy Bear, it's an, it's an important clarification. It, these are maps in the comprehensive plan, they're not in the zoning regs. So in terms of, you know, having an, an impact in a local development review process, I don't think it would be great because I think we can explain it away. I mean, there will be a record because of all these discussions about this was inadvertent. So I don't think it'll have a real heavy stick impact. But you never know whether or not someone could face some opposition at an Act 250 level where someone's saying, no, their town plan shows this. And it would, it would be unintentional, but you, you don't know. It's something that, for these higher priority properties, it, it, you know, shouldn't dawdle taking care of it. Places like these condos, they're not, they're developed. They're not coming in for approvals to put ten more units. So it's not gonna, it's not gonna play out that way for them. And the other things, though, I, I do think it's kind of, it's a bad mistake to have the substation listed as conservation land.
Yeah, I think there's some, there's some-
And yet you say the association, I think, you know, what if the, using your tennis court, court, what if an association wanted to put in two more tennis courts on something that on the town plan says it's conservation land? Yeah, we did have a fair number of these discussions, 'cause there, there's, it's also, how are the maps being referenced? 'Cause there's value in having the representation in a lot of different ways. So there's value in understanding what land is absolutely conserved, no development, nothing can happen on it. Like, there's just, there will be no contracts to do anything on that land. I think there's also value in showing that, based on zoning practices, there are areas, and we're gonna encounter this with form-based as well, that there are areas as part of projects that need to be open. And, and that could be like having a playground, or, there, there were lots of examples of that. But I think there's merit in showing that that is something that's important to Shelburne moving forward, and here are the areas that can't be developed but do have things on them. That is also, that is very different from that first example of this is conservation, can't do anything on them. And, and I think it started getting really complex, like, how many times do you wanna split hairs kind of thing? And so we left it fairly generic with an asterisk on that particular map. And there was an indication that conservation land also includes these association lands. But it's, but it's certainly a topic that's gonna needle at people, one way or another, depending on how you're viewing it.
Another thing to understand is that for some of the association lands, there's an additional agreement that was created when the development was created, an open space agreement. So there is essentially an easement on it. So it won't, we won't see three more tennis courts go in, in a place where a town, the town has an open space agreement. And I, I know as an example, the one up here, there is an open space agreement, although it's one of the only examples that I have found where it actually expires. I think it was a sixty-year agreement. Most of them are perpetual, so some of these places, there may be a tennis court, but it isn't gonna change because there's an open space agreement.
So just, so I'm clear, is the green defined as conservation land and the associations fall under conservation land? Or is it defined as open space and conservation falls under that? 'Cause there's, to me, there's a difference in how you define it.
What went into the original, to our, to the town plan that got approved was your original example, where it was noted as conservation land that happened to include these other categories.
I would think that if, if there are condominiums on that land, it's not conservation land. That, you know, you just like, I forget who, the farmers came in to point out that their land was conservation land. And, and that it's not, it's not conservation land, it's not something that's conserved forever necessarily. But I don't wanna go into that specific one, but, I mean, but my feeling is that it's got condos on it, and it's a yard around condos, that to me is like somebody's yard around their house. And if there are tennis courts, I guess I would see that as not conservation land. One piece of land up there that looks like it could be conservation land that you have a box on, looks like the area near the town beach down in the lower left corner.
I gotta get that, okay, sorry.
Okay.
You were saying down near the town beach?
Oh, well, the, the box that you have down there, the green area, which is along Green Bush, and that's Meach Cove property.
No, 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 that's, that's Wake Robin.
Oh, that's all Wake Robin.
That's Wake Robin, and, and so the thing about it is, you know, the more, the more we scratch. There are, there are some types that are a bit different. And Wake Robin has, is one of those, the property that you mentioned earlier is one of those where it is not open space per se, but in the view of the natural resources committee, where a lot of this thinking has come from, it has some degree of protection. It's not like there are absolutely no strings attached, because there are. Wake, Wake Robin has local approvals, it's got Act 250 approvals, and those approvals have an impact on what's going to happen in that green area. In the same way, there are other properties that have some kind of restriction as a result of an approval that, in their mind, represents this lower level of conservation or protection.
So the splitting the hair just once, like you were saying, is that not an option?
It is, it's just more that- I, I think when we were having these conversations within the context of the greater getting the plan on schedule and all that, it, it started getting very complicated very fast. And if you look at it as, well, how, how are these maps being used? And they weren't being used in contracts, they were being used more just to show, hey, here is land that has some kind of restriction on it. And therefore, it, it is considered conservation in some way, but of course, there's a big difference between, say, even a, there would be a big difference between a, a field, an agricultural field that's protected by Vermont Land Trust, which means it can't be developed on it, but technically it can still have buildings on it if they are associated with that operation. And so you could, you could easily say, well, is that conserved? But at some level, it is because it's preventing other things from happening on it. And I think some of the concerns that we had from people and organizations that came to us after these maps came out and were approved was, like in the case of Teddy Bear, clearly that's not a conservant place, and, and hence needing to back off this a little bit. But, yeah, it, it's, it's really how far down the rabbit hole do you wanna go? And I think in a perfect world, if I could throw it out there, I think it would be great what Pam presented to the DRB around housing committee ideas. And one of the questions that came up was, when you pull up a property, could we tie in what permits have been granted on that or what are active, that kind of thing? If there could be another thing explaining what kind of restrictions there might be on it? Like, so you could have those maps and have it layered? I just also happen to know that that is a lot of work and not likely to happen anytime soon.
Well, it may be actually, some of it may be sooner than you would otherwise think. If you saw the, the press release in the Shelburne News about this regional conservation group that has formed with South Burlington and Will's, so that's, that's the first thing that that group is trying to do, which is to have a standard set of data, but where you click on the lot, you know all of these, those types of things. How is it protected, what is the type of protection and so on? So the deadline that we were talking about at our meeting yesterday was, you know, have a version of it in January.
Hmm, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Well, and to address your question as well, for the purpose of the town plan and these maps, yes, it's, it's essentially up to the planning commission to figure out how, how we want to define these things. And that's why we came up with, you can see the asterisk next to conservation up there. And it says CMAP on page thirty-one, which I think has the note that says this includes association lands. Because we, we wanted to just be able to say, well, if you're looking at a map of the town, we're gonna, we're just gonna draw a line in the sand and say, conservation is more the concept of there are restrictions on it. It is protected in some way. But of course, that definition could vary depending on who the audience is.
I just wanted to share that, you know, working with Pam with this map and set of information, just focusing on the ones that had labels, she has made a version of the planning areas maps, this map too, because this is one of the places where you have the, the problem arises. And so you can see that there's no green down there on the Teddy Bear factory property. And then another place is this map three, the composite future land use map. And similarly, the green has gone there. And then the last place, the last map, where she's also fixed it, is this Growth Area Two map. The one question that she threw at me was, if we were to say something like, we should change the utility substation, she said, what would it be changed to? And her thought was industrial, but at least on this map, it's not gonna be industrial, it's going to be yellow because it's within this area. And then as far as these other maps, I think, yeah, it's gonna be yellow. It's going to be, the zoning district is not industrials, I guess the short of it. Anyway, I wanted you to know that she, she's been following along, she could make more edits, but she has made those edits so far.
So what's, what are the next steps for us here?
I mean, make some decision about which way we wanna go, but then, so for the next meet, if we make a decision on which way we wanna go this evening, then for the next meeting, do we have all the warnings prepared and that kind of thing?
That could be, if, so yes, if there was a consensus to, to deal with the maps now, I guess I would also loop in, remember that text change that we talked about? Because of the sewer service boundary problem? So I, I'm lumping those together. But if there was consensus, then yes, at your next meeting, we would have the materials together so that you could warn a hearing on the plan. But if you needed to do more work on it, we wouldn't have that ready.
Yeah, and we may be close enough to do that, I think we, this might be a topic we'd wanna bring up at the Natural Resources Committee Retreat as well, just to-
Yeah, yeah.
'Cause I think there's gonna be discussion around definitions, and I wanna make sure all this is aligned.
Yep, brilliant.
So are you suggesting that we wait until we talk to the Natural Resources Committee?
I think it'd be good, I, I don't know that, I mean, we, we wouldn't be prepared to warn tonight in any case. And we're gonna meet with them before our next meeting.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, totally makes sense.
Yeah.
Is there any urgency with, in relation to the town plan? That we need to get this updated at a certain point, like, sooner rather than later?
I'm sure there are those that would like to see it corrected sooner than later. The expectation that was set, once the plan got approved and we had these conversations, was there would be an amendment package coming. We did end up focusing on form-based zoning for a while. And in conversations, I think we were targeting fall to have that amendment package out. And it's technically still fall, so.
It's still fall till December twenty-third.
Yeah, so I feel like we're within that range.
I mean, I would encourage you to, if you could, you know, reach a consensus rather than have it carry on into the spring, I think it would be a good thing to have.
Yeah, I, I- Yeah, I, 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 it was more in terms of an immediate thing, but I do think that it would be healthy if we have a, a productive conversation on the fifth with Natural Resources Committee, and then we can have this in our packets for the fourteenth to warn, then we could get this rolling by the end of the year. On top of that, the select board, I'm not sure, is going to be super excited, given end of year, to be continuously getting more stuff from us. So that their schedule is going to play into this as well. But as far as our part goes, I think timing-wise, if we could warn this on the fourteenth and just have that as our general plan, we're in good shape.
I'll just put it out there, because I'm not going to be here on the fifth, I don't think. In general, my gut on this, after this conversation, is that I, I think it makes sense to want to include sort of a broad sense of what is sort of green space in town. But I've, I have concerns with lumping it under conservation. So if you break it out into open space versus conservation, or somehow change the definitions to make that fit, but I think even if you have an asterisk, most people read conservation and certain things come to mind, which doesn't sink for me with what's here. So that's my two cents to add to the discussion for next time.
It's too bad Kate's not here, because I think Kate was probably the person who was most vocal about the idea of adding the green to these maps, because like I was saying earlier, in the previous version of the plan, the planning areas map was just those three colors. You would have to go to a different map and you would have a different kind of look at it. You know, you weren't getting into the nuance of what different types of conservation were when you looked at this map, but they got put on, and one category is kind of tough for this kind of map.
Yeah. I know you can't put into too many categories either, but...
Yeah, the original...
If you could split it some, because I think there's value to seeing the whole picture, but you want to be clear about what you're seeing.
And I definitely hear that, because you're, you're right, conservation brings up a thing, and that, that was actually what created some of the, I don't want to call it backlash, because there was no real accusatory to it, but the concern with, um, some people saying, hey, our land is labeled as conservation, but it's not technically conserved in that way. I, I do think that's important. So may, it could be a matter of just using a different term, like say it's protected or some, some, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, it's constrained.
Constrained, sure.
Maybe something. Because I think there is the tendency to look at a lot of green, everybody who's doing planning and select boarding and stuff like that, to say, we've got enough open space. Look at all that green there. And in reality, it's...
Yeah, we don't need more money for the open space fund, because we've got so much right there.
Right, exactly, yeah. I, I agree.
So good luck next time.
All right, well, um, sounds like we've got a path forward there anyway. Shall we move on to subdivision matters?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks for highlighting all those other ones, too. There was, that, that's, that's good to clarify that.
Like I said, we're used to scratch.
Yeah, that's... That is the balance.
So if you wanted to jump into the next item, the packets. Are you sure?
No, I am. I was, I was waiting whether or not to just make a general clarifying statement. It's gonna be clarifying.
Go ahead.
So when I was reading this, I started getting a little bit turned around, and I just wanted to maybe set my own expectations, that in the case that form, the form-based overlay is used, those are the zoning rules that would take precedence, right? So, wh- when I was reading this, like, this basically acknowledges, um, that if form-based zoning is used, those are the zoning rules, um, like, that these, these subdivision definitions would acknowledge that that would take precedent to avoid a double review of some sort.
Yeah. So maybe, maybe I can break it down in a way that will help a little bit, and that is, not to begin at the beginning, but to begin in the definition of major subdivision. Just to point out that one of the things that we missed was the fact that when, well, I knew about it a long time ago, but it had slipped my mind when we were putting together the warning for form-based zoning. But when Brandy compiled the new form-based zoning format, she felt strongly that we should break from this Article seventeen A and put form-based zoning in its own article, and it ended up being twenty-two. And we hadn't caught that so that the packages of amendments would correct the reference. Because right now, if the select board adopted form-based zoning, we would have this disconnect. We'd have the subdivision regs that refers to seventeen A, and seventeen A is gone, and we have form-based zoning. So, simple thing to understand is, is that first and foremost, I would like to ask you to change the references from seventeen A to twenty-two. Now, with that out of the way, we're just realizing that everything, and, and the same thing applies down here in minor subdivision. So that's the first hurdle. The second hurdle is this issue that you got at, Jason, which is that the way things are right now, someone can do a project like the one on the Yankee Doodle property they're doing, was originally three buildings, now it's two buildings, twenty-four in each. And they're not only going through the form-based zoning review, but they're doing a major subdivision review. And I think that the idea was to try to make form-based zoning, the form-based zoning path, an expedited path. You had to do a lot, but if you did it, then it would be more predictable and it would be quicker. And so after that select board meeting that we were at, where there were just bringing back into focus this interest in, you know, why aren't people using form-based zoning more, it was becoming clear to me again, that's something that had been mentioned a long time ago, which was, if someone's going through form-based zoning, then do they have to go through a full-blown subdivision review? Now, the thing about subdivision is that in Shelburne, that includes some things that most people don't think of as subdivisions, like an elderly housing project all on one lot, where land isn't being subdivided, is called a subdivision. An elderly housing project is called a subdivision, even if it's all on one lot. So what this set of changes is intending to do is to say that if it's, um, yeah, it takes out basically apartments and elderly housing, things that are going through form-based zoning review from the subdivision review process. So that's, that's its essence, is that you wouldn't have to go through three steps of subdivision review as well as form-based zoning, if you're going through the form-based zoning process. If you're not going through the form-based zoning process, you would.
So to, huh, so if, if there is a current situation where there are multiple lots, and somebody says, like, let's say an individual owns all those lots, or they're gonna buy all those lots, and then their, their goal is to bring them together, uh, they could present a plan under form-based zoning that shows, um, yes, I understand these are multiple lots today, this, this plan is proposing consolidating them as one into one subdivision, and under form-based zoning, we want to make, move forward. And if going down that process, that gets approved, then that essentially skips the, okay, first you have to go through and subdivide, and then once you have it subdivided, then you, that doesn't make sense. I did that backwards, yeah.
Well, it just seems like it's, we're, we're talking about looking at any form-based zoning stuff as a minor subdivision, as opposed, no matter what it is. Is that, that's really the change that you're talking about here?
It's, it's, uh, it's a couple of things. First and foremost, let's look at the definition of, of subdivision, because like I said, subdivision includes elderly housing project, and it includes multifamily housing project. And the question I would ask is, if someone is doing a multifamily housing project on a lot, and they're going through form-based zoning, do you want them to have to go through the subdivision review process? And if the answer is no, then you got to make a way out for them in the definition of subdivision. And so if I start it from the premise that, hey, you know, someone who's doing an elderly housing project on the Yankee Doodle property, maybe the next version of that, we don't think it needs to go through the subdivision process, then you would add the kind of language that's here, which would say that it's a subdivision, except if it's going through form-based zoning review.
That's Article twenty-two.
Sorry? Sorry?
Four bases, Article twenty-two.
Or four base would be Article twenty-two when it's revised, yeah. Right now, it's seventeen A, but it would move to twenty-two.
You mentioned that one lot with multifamily or elderly, um, elder housing is considered subdivision. Is that a Shelburne thing, or is that an industry practice?
No, it's, well, it's part of the definition.
Because I would not think of, I would not think, I think if subdivision is land that's being subdivided, right?
And the thing, the, the way I describe it is, is that, you know, back in the old days, when subdivision regs were first being started, people copied from each other. And the thing about it is, in other parts of the country, subdivision was, came before zoning in a lot of places, and so they included in their subdivision regs some kind of zoning-like elements. Uh, and that's just a feature of Shelburne subdivision regs that's existed for a long time, is that it says, we want to, you know, we're gonna bring you through the subdivision review process too, if you're doing any of those things, shopping center, multifamily housing, elderly housing, even those things that aren't splitting land.
So all this is proposing is that if it goes through form-based...
Right.
It would not have to go through subdivision.
It wouldn't have to go through the subdivision, which can be a three-step process.
Right, right.
So what's the, sorry. Yeah, what's, so what's the downside?
Yeah, well, what is there value to the community for having things go through subdivision as well?
Yeah, I mean, so the trade-offs, as I see it, are that, you know, if the community is looking to create more incentives for people to use form-based zoning without making it the default requirement, this is the kind of thing that would make people be attracted, because it speeds up the process. The downside is that it doesn't have as many eyes looking at a project as long as happens currently. And sometimes, things don't come to light at the very first look. They come to light later, and something that I've heard described, uh, is, you know, back in the day when jobs were shared, and the planning commission did some things and the zoning boards did another, one of the arguments in favor of keeping that is, is that you did get something. You know, you had another bite of the apple in case something that the developer didn't mention early on came out, and you had another review process to finish up. So the bottom line is, the more eyes looking at something, longer to sort things out.
So any, any other use group would have to go through if...
I guess if it, it wouldn't have to go through a major subdivision process, say, in, in office complex or something like that, if it were part of the, the form-based zoning. It wouldn't in itself, unless it was subdividing land, creating new lots.
A office building doesn't trigger, but a multifamily apartment, you know, three, three units and a building, a multifamily building, that would do three, that is a subdivision.
So that's why these are singled out? Because they're the only ones that, that have to go through the major subdivision process?
That go through the subdivision process and...
If, even if there's not a, a creation of new lots?
Yeah.
It seems to me it's like a holdover from a time past, yes?
No? It, it, I think that's one way to look at it.
And, and this is where things can get really complicated, because there's, um, my view, we, there, there's the broader concept of eventually, do you, do you want to make form-based zoning mandatory, and currently it's in the corridor, corridor, and then do we want to expand that out to, to other areas? And, um, it's almost the sort of thing that, I, I'm sure it's potentially possible, but it would be a whole lot easier if this were a dedicated grant-funded, like, there's a, a dedicated somebody or team that is actually working on, how can we come up with a more integrated zoning and clear out a lot of those artifacts? Otherwise, just the nature of the way the commission works and is set up and interacts, it's, it's more of a piecemeal thing over time, so it's looking at it more strategically. I, I absolutely hear that, though, and I'm, like, I'm always open to, how can we get to that endpoint quicker? But going through exercises like the, uh, just even going through the, the town plan, um, that process and going through form-based zoning, each one of these things always takes almost infinitely longer than you think it might in the beginning. And some of these topics, and I think that might have been why you're feeling a hesitation from you around the conservation lands, and what are we doing with maps? Because we've gotten into these discussions that start just going deeper and deeper and deeper, and in the end, what's gonna, what's the best use of time that, that we have? And, but always open to how, how we can do it better as well. So it's just really finding that balance. So it's, uh, please, always, everybody, bring that stuff up. I, I think it's worth really getting into, but what I'm, what I'm kind of wondering is, over time, is, once we have enough of these issues and can be able to articulate where there are some of these conflicting ideas or thoughts, that could all go onto some master list that at some point goes into a project to just streamline overhaul, make consistent with that holistic view across the entire spectrum.
So you're saying that maybe we look at changing the zoning regulations just to not require, um, subdivision review for those projects, rather than singling them out in the definition of what a minor or major subdivision is? Is that, is that written in the zoning regs, just as far as those specific use groups?
So the thing about it is, is that the two separate documents... So what, the, the control of the jurisdiction of the subdivision regulations is determined by the subdivision regs. So making an amendment in the zoning to try to change the subdivision regs wouldn't work. If there's an issue with the subdivision regs, we have to fix that issue in the subdivision regs, if that helps. So even, so even if the regs, if the, if the zoning regs said in the, if the form-based zoning section said, we don't want you to comply with the subdivision regs, I would, I would, um, have serious concerns that it wouldn't be valid, because even though you have this language in the zoning regs, you would have this contradictory language in the subdivision regs. And so the thing to do is to fix the contradictory language in the subdivision regs.
Which is what this is doing, yeah. Which is hard, because if you, if you look at things, big picture, and you see it, you just, you want all the pieces to kind of fit together nicely.
And one day, one day, we can hope there would be the unified bylaw, and like, this is what I think Jason is getting at.
Yes.
Is that it would all be together, and we wouldn't be having these conversations, because it would just all be one ordinance, one bylaw, and it would be simpler then. But that's not how we have it right now.
Because that could streamline the work of the commission as well, because you're just working with one document instead of, like, okay, we want to make this change, but then we have to understand, well, where else, what other documents does this impact? And then we have to go make those changes and to make everything live together.
It feels like the, what we, what we really need to do is to update the subdivision regulations to refer to the proper form-based, form-based zoning article.
Yeah, that's the core.
That's, that's like a, we gotta do that. And I agree that in and of itself, I'm not sure that I would advocate to go change the sort of how multifamilies or buildings are subdivided in and of itself, but in that we already have to go back and make this amendment, this seems like a pretty simple addition to that process that's being laid out here, which would take down a barrier to some development, which doesn't seem completely relevant in this day and age with the inclusion of the form-based zoning regulations. So anyways, broadly speaking, I'm in support of that.
I have to put out there that I have a little hesitation of, I'm not into putting up barriers to the development, and I don't think we want to make this all complicated, but I still have some hesitations about form-based zoning overall. And the work that we did to streamline it, I'm comfortable with going forward, but we haven't had the larger discussion yet, so the idea of making it easier to put up a shopping complex without multiple eyes looking at it, makes me nervous, because I'm still not entirely comfortable with that. And I realize that that is my take on it, and form-based zoning is what the town has in place and is moving forward, but I have to put that out there, because that's, when I hear Dean's explanation of sort of the potential downside, that's my worry with form-based zoning, and so I'm hesitant to say, yeah, let's just take it out and go with it.
But they still get, but they still get formal hearings and warnings, and, I mean, all that stuff happens. This subdivision is just another set of...
Yeah, it's another set of eyes. I mean, that...
It just drags it on longer for everybody. Right, but, so when we talk about the eyes, can we talk about what eyes?
Well, I think it's a combination of both eyes on people on staff and people... Well, I think it's a combination of both eyes on people on staff and people on boards. And it does also opportunities for members of the public to, to see what's happening. So it's a, it's a lot of different eyes.
Can you tell us, um, I know we, we all have known it in the past, like, the, the steps for minor subdivision and then the steps for major subdivision? What are we leaving out by doing a minor subdivision? We all should know this, but I don't remember what the steps are missing.
The standards for a minor subdivision and the standards for a major subdivision are, are essentially the same. It's just that it can happen more quickly with a minor subdivision. And so you go to the board with your concept, and they say, yep, that's a valid concept. And if it's a minor, we classify it, you know, we hereby declare your project as a minor subdivision. It means you get to come back, and it's just one more time. And so you're happy, because you're gonna be off to the races and coming back. And you, if you get that approval, you know you're, you're done. But there's also a lot more riding on that. So you have to have a lot of your homework done. You don't get to spread out the homework, basically, like you do with a major, where you're gonna leave the sketch plan and they say, okay, your sketch plan is approved, you're a major subdivision, so we'll look at your application for prelim. And that just means that a lot of the discussion is happening in this middle step with a major project. But it's happening at the final step for a minor project. And some people, you know, they, they might regret, in a sense, choosing, or being happy about going the minor route, because they could get to the final step, their second step, and learn that the board, something that the board had said was a concern. And they hadn't really fully appreciated how big a concern it was. And they might have just kinda gone off, and they get to the DRB for that final, their second step. And the DRB digs in its heels and says, well, no. So things could grind down in final, um, and you still have to, you have to work them out. With a bigger project, it's the three steps, and most of the work is happening at the second step. And then the final step is, is more than non-event, because you've dealt with all the key issues.
So what, um, additional work by going through, like, a three-step process, this preliminary subdivision review? What's, what information is being brought up there that would be, in addition to what would be brought up in the, in the final review?
That's why, it's, it's, it's essentially the same information. That's why I started off by saying, the standards are the same. You just don't have to spread them out over three meetings with a minor subdivision. But when you, when you look at the, the subdivision regs, it makes reference to the same standards. So it's not like you have a JV version of the requirements if it's a minor subdivision. They're all varsity standards, but you just get to, you know, you take a year off from high school, or you, you skip a grade. Is what happens, but you still need the credits.
Yeah.
And I guess my question about the eyes is, it's still the DRB and the staff involved with reviewing prior to that. So it's the same eyes, it's just the number of times they touch it.
Yeah, although, you know, one of the things that experience has shown me is, is that sometimes, you know, when you're dealing with volunteer bodies, let's say like the fire department. You know, the fire department puts its imprint on projects in a big way. But they're not, they're not paid staff, and so it's a, it's not always the same. And so sometimes there'll be something that didn't get flagged at prelim or, yeah, didn't like get flagged at prelim, that I think they're awfully glad that they have a chance to bring in, or bring up at final. So that's the kind of thing that could be more in, you know, at risk if you don't have those multiple looks at it.
What are other towns doing? Like, what's South Burlington doing? Are they taking away this, or are they keeping it a three-step process?
Well, so in more places that are using form-based zoning, they're trying to make it much more administrative. So you're having fewer trips to the DRB, and there are fewer public eyes looking at it. And you have more reliance on staff eyes. So department heads of water and sewer and stormwater and things like that, they are making the call. And I will say that, you know, you read, you read seven days about things going on in Winuski, and there has been a bit of a back, uh, pushback, because certain people feel like, well, wait a second. One person shouldn't be making those big decisions. It really should be something that involves more people. And the community in Maine that we were looking at, that adopted form-based zoning, have a long commercial core, that was one of the lessons that they drew, is that people, some people in the community felt like they would take the, the inefficiency when the gain was the feeling that the public supported the decisions more. Because they were skeptical of a big decision being made by just one or two people.
So we're trying to, by, if we change this, we'd be trying to make, like, one less step to the DRB. But we're already giving, if, if somebody chooses to go to the form-based zoning, they're already getting the advantage of increased density, et cetera, et cetera, already. Which would be, I think, more of the driving force to them doing their project than one less trip to the DRB. It seems like-
I think you're right.
I think I agree with you, Ben, and that, that those kind of projects, especially like a shopping center complex, if Kmart's moving here, then I'd wanna see it three times. Or not us see it three times, give the DRB more.
I'll just, just, I'm not interested in, in, in not having the public have an opportunity to look at it. I'm not interested in not having staff having an opportunity, in the development board an opportunity to look at it. I, I absolutely want those things to happen, and in no way am I advocating that we pull those things away and, and give it just to the administration. That's, that's not my position. But I do think, and especially coming out of that economic development forum and listening to folks who have struggled to get projects through the, the zoning, that putting up multiple opportunities to just talk, sort of talk about the same project on multiple times in a public hearing and giving, and giving multiple people the opportunity to push it down on multiple occasions seems like a, a waste of time and resources, and it may turn people off. And so anyways, I, I, I struggle with extending that process any sort of way.
I would agree with that.
Well, it's like this sign, and not, not that I'm a proponent of gas stations in general, but the, it's like that sign at Costco that says that this will open once the appeals stop. And that's been there for a very long time. And some of the, even some, some of the stories that came out at that economic development discussion, where you, you can, you can have a project and you might have one individual that's, that's finding a loophole or something to really just rail at.
So they can show up at all three of those places and-
And, and not to say that they're wrong, and it's, it's good to be able to have that voice, but at the same time, at, at some point, that as long as there's rational, reasonable discussion, and if, if the rules miss something, like, um, you know, Shelburne went through the whole thing with the salt shed, then there should be more attention to, okay, well, there is nothing preventing this currently, so that needs to be conceded. But then how do we shore things up to, and to make sure that does not happen again? That, that, that's where the focus should be, um, so that we don't become too bureaucratic. But again, yeah, a balance. I, I don't disagree with you at all.
And I'm, I'm torn, because I don't, I don't think it's beneficial to anyone to just make it a cumbersome process. I'm just not entirely confident that all the safeguards that should be there are there, looking at the big things that can be developed very quickly under this potentially. And so that's why I'm hesitant to remove things at this point.
I, I think the, um, to address your concern, Neil. I think the, the thing that everybody was getting hung up on, like Costco was, like, Matt Cohen at Fiddlehead was, and I mentioned at that forum, I didn't know if I was, like, clear enough, probably not. But, um, it seems like the problem comes in people appealing to the environmental courts. Which I would think, um, I mean, this is just one scenario, because I'm torn too. But if somebody is out of town for the preliminary, and then they just get hit with it one time at a final DRB hearing, and they don't really have their voice, and they haven't digested, like a neighbor or whatever, then their only recourse is then to go and appeal it. And because it's already a done deal. Whereas if it goes through three steps, it, it, it could work that, rather than just building their case each time that, of things that they're, like, angry with the project about, they could maybe be part of, like, some kind of a discussion where the developer comes back to the second step and says, well, you know, we tried to address your issue, or, you know, one of those, one of those steps. I mean, it could, it could backlash by making it too streamlined, by directly going to the appeal as the only, as the only recourse if somebody just isn't aware of the thing going on.
Well, in, in a perfect world, though, I, I think that it would be great to see just more engagement and awareness of what's going on in the community to begin with, um, which is a big ask, and I get that, and I'm guilty as well. But having direct experience on this board, we spent a lot of time debating publicly, um, the rural zoning changes. And it came down to the meeting where the select board was going to approve it, and there was a party there that wanted to torpedo the whole thing. And then there were, I mean, that was followed by not-so-thinly-veiled, um, indications that this was, we were just trying to sneak stuff in and all of that. And that, to me, is more of a process of just educating how the process works and having people be aware. If somebody's gonna be out of town or away, these, these things are warned. I mean, there, there are mechanisms. And, um, of, of course, somebody could miss something, but, I mean, where do you, where does that line get drawn? So it's, not, not to get all hippy-dippy and stuff, but I think that more, the more integrated we are and the more understanding we are as a community and just are aware of our surroundings and what's going on, I think that the more informed we all are and the better off we can be. Maybe that's a pipe dream.
I'm all about it. I meant that seriously, I wasn't being sarcastic.
So, pardon my name, but, so obviously a project needs to be approved by the DRB, right?
Yes, well-
Yep.
So, yeah, well, no. DRB is the group that reviews things, yeah?
Right, let's say there's no subdivision involved. There's no subdivision involved, right? If someone's proposing a project-
No land being split, okay?
Right. So who, so, right, so, like, using this example here, we've got a, a piece of land, right? And we've got, um, elder housing proposed, and we're saying in this proposal, there would be no subdivision if it followed form-based.
If this, if this was to become the, the law, right? So then it would mean that it goes through form-based zoning. And then it's going to follow the form-based zoning track, which doesn't mean that it doesn't go to the DRB. Is that where you were going with it?
Right, I'm saying any project's gotta go-
Well, not every project, but many form-based zoning projects will also have to go to the DRB because of some aspect of them that invokes conditional use, or they need a waiver, or whatever.
Right.
It's hard right now for us to say what percentage would need to go, because it's gonna depend on the type of project.
So I guess, I guess I'm trying to ask- So it wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily have to go to the DRB. If it's, like, if it's a conditional use, yes, it does. If it's a permitted use already, then it doesn't.
Correct. I mean, unless they need a waiver.
And if it's a, it's a non-conforming lot, then they would have to go to the DRB. If it's, every, everything's good with the lot, it's all, you know, it meets zoning regulations.
So a fairly sizable project could be basically not seen by the DRB. But there is more in Shelburne's form-based zoning that, this kind of a magnet that pulls people towards the DRB in our regs more than you find in some others. But it's something-
So I guess my, my follow-up question is, then, so who approves subdivisions?
That's also the DRB.
Right, so you've got the same group looking at it twice.
That's where I was coming from.
Well, it's all together. I mean, I should just make clear-
Right, so, so it's not like you're gonna have a second set of eyes at it, it's the same eyes?
The, um-
Am I missing something?
I just wanted to make clear that it's, there are three-step processes. The meetings happen, more than one thing can happen at a meeting. So I, I wanna make it clear that it's not adding, um, length. It's, you can nest the form-based zoning inside the subdivision, or vice versa. So you could do two things at a single night. As far as the number of eyes it's concerned, is, it's just more as a practical matter, that if there are more meetings or more steps, then someone goes out of town, you have another person sub in, and it's another set of eyes.
Sure. I guess I was thinking it was a whole separate other group that is going to be looking at it.
No, it's not, not like in the old days with zoning boards and planning commissions.
Right, so, and I guess that diminishes, to me, the, the value of-
Three, seeing it three times, right, or two?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so-
It's all the DRB.
Yeah, and, and I think somewhere in there, to me, it's almost like, yes, you, you give something more time, and there's more opportunity. However, at the same time, it's, it's increasing the, the bureaucratic steps. And you can see it from both sides. I mean, if you're, if you're on the side of trying to get a, a project done, and we've seen some of this, I was at the, uh, DRB the other night, and it, it's, it's a great forum to be able to have people come in and ask questions and have those interactions, and have the DRB ask questions of the developer, and really make sure that plans are, are square. But at the same time, if, once you leave your, once that process is open, the longer you leave it open, the, the more opportunity there is to drag something out even further. And sometimes that's a good thing. Um, but in general, it's also a very frustrating thing. And I think what a lot of the complaints stem from.
And it does cost extra money to go through these, to pay consultants to show up, prepare drawings and all that, just.
Yeah. Well, and the goal for this, uh, so would this be something that, I mean, there isn't, is it, this isn't, this was something that would just stand on its own? It would be its own?
Uh, you mean in terms of the hearing?
If we were to change these definitions, it would be to warn a hearing and-
Yeah, I mean, you obviously aren't set up to, to warn a hearing tonight. But the idea would be if there was a consensus that, let's just say, people only wanted to just make sure that it had twenty-two instead of seventeen A, then that's what I would prepare. If the idea was change twenty-two, seventeen to twenty-two, and then also do the other stuff, because you felt like, yeah, let's just have it on a, a hearing agenda, and maybe we'll shoot it down, you'll shoot it down. You could do that too. Or if you just wanted to deal with it a little bit longer before you made any decisions to warn a hearing, or had the materials prepared, do that.
And I guess another question, if we did have form-based zoning as a, in a future, or something that we've been talking about, instead of having form-based zoning be an overlay in the Route Seven corridor, if that was de facto, this would be not an issue.
Well, um, everything would be form-based zoning, but if, if we still had two regs, we would have the same issue, because you could be doing a form-based zoning project, you would have to do a form-based zoning project. We'd still have this question, do they also need to do subdivision? It's only if you had the unified ordinance and then it was a whole.
Yeah, I was leaping ahead.
So what do we do? Do we, do we make a motion to do something, or how do we, how does it work?
Well, we're not in the place where we can warn a hearing on this tonight anyway, so all we're gonna do is, I mean, we, we could just direct Dean to use this language and prepare us for the next meeting to have that conversation.
Yeah, or I could have two versions. I mean, I could have a version that's just-
I mean, the, the easy thing to do here is just to change the, the article numbers, and, and we need to do that. And, you know, we could follow up with, you know, get Kate's input on this as well, and just see where, where, where it falls out. I mean, I'm not gonna fall on my sword for this, but it just feels like something I wanna put out there. If we don't have consensus, then we shouldn't do it, you know, just leave it the way it is and let, let water take its course.
Right. So we all say what our feeling is on it?
I, I, well, I, I'd, I'd be happy to at least move forward with this language so that in our next discussion, we could have this and be in a place where we could warn for hearing. And, and even, even though, and we're very fortunate on this commission where we tend to have unanimous decisions, but, I mean, it's happened where we don't always have a majority. So we, I mean, we can just see where that goes and, um, have, think about it more over the coming weeks as well.
And I don't, I mean, this isn't a fall on the sword one for me either, I guess. It's just, it's a concern that I sort of have about these in general. And I think I'm still sort of seeing how it all comes together, and I, I wanna put it out there when stuff comes up, that this, make sure we're thinking about that, and not just pushing forward to make it easier and having stuff go up that isn't really what's in the town's best interest.
And just a thought for that next time, um, e- even if the language stays the way it is- is, would currently it's shopping center, multifamily and elderly, but would that be just leave out the exemption for shopping center, for example, if that has a particular slant to it, given what we know of form-based zoning and some of the plans that we've seen come to us? Because that's more about buildings and residential and that sort of thing. Shopping center might have a different context to it that, you know, maybe maybe that needs to take a different path.
You could definitely choose.
Yeah, so those are things that could factor into the next discussion as well. But I do think this is important to bring the consistency together with form-based, if nothing else, referencing the appropriate article.
We can all agree on that.
Right? So does that sound good for next time? We'll, Dean can prepare.
Okay.
The that package.
That was a good discussion. Thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah, that was good. And then that would take us into future meetings, which.
When I read Dean's memo about natural resource committee topics, I wrote down stormwater. And then as I looked through the packet, I was like, oh, somebody's already.
You know, I did the same thing. I had stormwater in my head for this one. But it's the next one that we were going to have that Tom potentially was available?
Yes, I'm trying to remember. So, yeah, that was the, right, yeah, the meeting on the fifth, yeah, the fourteenth.
And then the fourteenth, right.
Yeah.
And that one on the fifth is at six o'clock, is it?
Well, the specific start time, I mean, some some parameters for the retreat that I think need to get worked out are specific location, if you want to try to do something different from here, but at this point, it's getting challenging.
Hagen-tert.
Time, do you want to start at six? Sometimes you've started at six. And the agenda. And I did trade emails with both, well, I talked with Don and traded emails with Don and Gail, and Gail maybe wanting to call you. But I said that, you know, let me report on whatever came from this meeting.
Yeah, so well, clearly, the conservation lands on maps is one of them.
Right.
That that's one of the topics. I I think it's it's worth, if I recall, the last note I saw from Don was that there had been lots of discussion within the committee around definitions. And.
Yes.
Unless I missed something, I think that was sort of like a preliminary, hey, here's where we are, we're working on it. So that could be something that we could.
Yep, they've come up with their own recommendations for the definitions of open space and steep slopes because that was specifically responding to the discussion of the PUD stuff. And then they've also been having a bigger picture discussion of other terms that they would perhaps see defined and perhaps and added to the regs.
So that's two topics. And given how those have gone in the past, that could take two hours.
Good to know. Thank you, Jason.
Don't want to overload these things. Any other topics that anybody would be interested in with them? And I imagine that they might have some ideas as well.
In particular?
Yeah.
The maps one was my big one.
Yeah. Well, we we could we could say that for from our perspective, that those are the two leading topics. It might be worth, given the timeline, some of the SIP things as well, just to ensure that their viewpoints are something that we could include in our memo, even though they probably have their own.
Is it worth talking about stormwater stuff with the natural resources commission?
I think they're going to maybe want to raise it in some way, but it may be premature if you're going to benefit from having Tom come.
Yeah, I think it might be something more if there are, may maybe just to get some general ideas from them and us through a discussion of where some of the main concerns might be so that when Tom's here on the fourteenth, we can ask some questions to drive that conversation.
Even just talking, I mean, we we had spent some time talking about doing some changes in the form-based zoning with regards to stormwater pollution. And we kind of said, let's put this off and do a more comprehensive thing down the road. So even just having a conversation about, that's where we landed. This is what we're thinking about. And if, you know, if they have specific ideas and thoughts on that, it seems like a good opportunity to discuss.
Yeah. Well, that's, so that's four topics there. And I imagine they they'll they'll have some. And and I know the definitions topic could could take a little bit, given some of the other terms I heard I saw that they were working on. And as far as locations go, yeah, I certainly wouldn't want to impose on Gail and even float that question.
Gail herself would not likely be participating because of her treatments, but I do feel a little bit weird about, like, yeah, let's go back to the vineyard.
I know, right? It's it's always lovely to be able to do that. But is this room is available that night?
This room is available that night, I believe. Yeah, I'm pretty sure I locked it in. I, yeah.
Isn't the library have spaces like this now?
They do have.
Again, I won't be there, but I thought they were supposed to have like meeting rooms for all of us.
Yeah.
It depends, it varies by night.
And they're open on Tuesday, Thursday.
Yeah, I was going to say, it varies by night. And so what you can get access to varies depending on whether or not it's a library late night or not.
So we can inquire about that.
Yeah.
I mean, don't do it on my account because I won't be there. But if you're looking for all spaces, it's not possible.
That would limit when we finish because they close at eight thirty, I mean.
Well, there's some benefit there, too, I suppose.
There you go. I'm in favor of the library.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and I mean, six, six to eight thirty, that's still like good work. Yeah, okay. So I think we have, that's good stuff to be able to coordinate with them. We can and then post that rather soon. And then our next meeting on the fourteenth would be the, well.
Hearing on form-based zoning.
Yep. So that, yeah, form-based zoning hearing, the subdivision definition discussion. And and Tom on stormwater. And just based on buzz, do are we, would, do you think we'd be anticipating anybody wanting to come in for that form-based zoning hearing?
I won't be surprised if people show up, but I haven't heard any rumblings.
I'm just thinking from a loose concept of ordering, in the event that that were to happen, we might want to have the form-based zoning hearing first and and then Tom and then because the subdivision we can do.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But but I don't know. I mean, it also is Tom scheduled because if we bracket that time and we talk about this at the retreat, we say, we're going to spend 30 minutes on this, then or whatever it is.
It does that, yeah.
Then the expectation can be set on when the form-based zoning hearing would happen for anybody in the public.
I mean, do we also need to get into the the budget piece on the fourteenth? Is that going to be our narrow window?
Yeah, I guess that's something I was missing. Yeah. All right, so that'll be a.
Hold.
Yeah. All right. Tight on the clock, yeah.
I have a question. This is not a pressing thing, but in terms of future topics, sort of some informal conversations about the Village Center and what you, this economic, I wasn't at the Economic Development Forum, but looking at maybe if we can sort of investigate, why are there barriers that we could address here that are creating like the empty storefronts in town? Is there is there something in our zoning that makes that store to the left of the country store vacant and not, you said it used to be a restaurant or something? Are there are there things? We have a number of empty storefronts in town, and we have things growing up sort of on the sides. And are there things that we could do to help make it better for businesses? Because it's seems like Douglas Suites, if they were in the center of town, would get a lot more walk-in traffic. But there's a reason they're over there and not here. So it's just to put out there is something I'm interested in thinking about at some point on this.
It'd be interesting, David Webster owns that property that was the restaurant, and you know, maybe get David or David and some other property owners, you know, people who are actually trying to find tenants for the space to come in and say, because we've had conversations with him about, you know, just the somewhat general lack of interest because the most obvious thing is some kind of retail, but retail is hard.
Right.
Right. And and rents aren't exactly cheap, just based on informal conversations I've had. But that and.
It might be completely out of our control, but if there's something, you know.
Yeah, if if you're interested, I I made a note I've been meaning to, I I need to reach out to Jamie. And, you know, you can't have a quorum on an email and that kind of stuff. But if you're interested in that, I'd be happy to copy you on that. Because I'm I'm really interested in seeing where that's going because I think it's informing a lot of the discussions that we are having and will be having.
I I am really interested in that, too. I mean, it is more than just the decline of retail. I think it's it's pedestrian access, it's parking, it's it's traffic. There are other things. I mean, we used to have, you know, the plumbing hardware store close to home right in town that used to be where the kitchen store just was.
There's a new one there.
Yeah, yeah.
Dean, they've moved twice or three times over.
Yeah, they have, yeah. I mean, Dean's idea really like ties into what some of the folks, business folks were saying at the economic forum was solicit us, come to us.
That that's for changing regulations, but there's.
No, 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 I understand that. But 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 going 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 to get information from from them certainly is is in sync with 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 that general theme.
It is. There's, and this is part of why I I need to reengage with Jamie, because there's a little bit of, this is, to me, it appears that this is being driven by the select board. And so I just want to be conscious of that and position it more from a how can we support what's going on instead of like, are if we start to drive in some direction, are we stepping on toes or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was somebody, yeah, I was speaking with somebody recently who's heavily involved with economic development in Winuski. And, yeah, I mean, different towns do it different ways. Sometimes they'll have a position and I think, or a commission or whatever it is. And then those, that would be the the conduit for interacting with.
Yeah, for the outreach.
Business owners and just understanding, how do we start connecting dots? And then that filters back to, okay, if it does become a limitation on zoning or something, then we would take that feedback and we can adjust zoning accordingly to open things up a bit.
Because it relates to schedule, there's one thing I was going to mention, it's it may be only like a 20 or 30% chance of it happening, but it could come up. That is, that you probably didn't know this, but as the planning commission, you are also the telecommunications review board.
New cell tower.
Is that other duties as a sign?
And and the thing is.
What's that?
We didn't tell you about.
Yeah, no.
Well, the telecom review board didn't used to be the planning commission. It used to be the development review board or the zoning board before it. But when there was a concern raised about a data tower that was being considered in Shelburne, there was a revision of the telecom ordinance, and that was one of the changes in it. And I'm not going to get into the details of the application because if you are sitting as the telecom review board, I don't want to give you information in advance. But that possibility exists. We've had conversations with a party and their attorney, and there may be an application coming in. And so that may be something that's kind of coming out of left field, like, wow. And some of this is really unusual because of where the federal law basically says you don't get to review this, or where the state law says you don't get to review this. And there may be this little space where you'll get to review something.
And procedurally, would that be something that during a planning commission meeting, we would just say, okay, this segment will now be?
It would be kind of more like a DRB meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did the town, is it the town bylaw that put the planning commission in this?
Space or is that a state thing?
Town.
It's a town.
Yeah.
Why did they do that?
You're wondering who to blame.
Was that a motion to adjourn? Well, like I said, it it used to be that the the body that did zoning reviews was also the telecom board, but that that was something that was changed. I'm 99% sure as to why. You may want to look at who was on the select board at that time, who was on the planning commission.
Awesome.
So that was just a heads up. I'm hoping that your schedule is not affected by one of these things, but it could very well be.
Yeah, well.
Well, I'm thinking 20 to 30%, but.
Sure. Well, thanks for the heads up. Is there, well, so with that, are there any other, any other topics on our future meetings? Because we want to move into, that was a good article.
Yeah.
Concepts. Then anything on our other business that we haven't hit on?
That was kind of other business.
That was, yeah, we jumped ahead. Mostly just to segue into, is that a good time for entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Sounds like it to me.
All right. Moved by Stephen, seconded by Megan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.